...to order. I'd like to welcome all of you to the Massillon City Council Meeting for Monday, July 7, 2014. We have an attendance with us tonight, all council members, with the exception of the President, who was out of town at the seminar, and we also had Ken Coler, the Director, Larry Marcus, Community Development Director, Bob Zedel from the, Mr. Sturges's daughter, or, I'm sorry, Prosecutor's Office, and Keith DeLusky from Engineering, and that's all I see right now. And miss anybody, we don't have to excuse, so it's fine. I'm sorry, Treasurer is here, Maude Slegel, hold your hand up so they know who you are, and her husband and former Councilwoman, Laura Slegel, but you don't count. Thanks, Larry. All right, I'll ask that everybody turn their cellphones off or turn them down, vibrator, whatever, so they don't interrupt the meeting, and we will start off with number one on the agenda, roll call.
Chauvin?
Here.
Cunningham-Hederly?
Present.
Del Rio Keller?
Here.
Alter?
Here.
Lewis?
Present.
Manson?
Here.
Skazin?
Here.
Stere?
Here.
And Stinson?
Here.
And President, Mr. Pudlin?
Thank you. We will have the invocation of Councilwoman Nancy Hall. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, please bless us all as we stand before you. Bless our mayor, his administration, all elected officials. Keep our safety forces and all city employees in your care. We ask that you give our citizens patience as we struggle through the city's financial difficulties. Bless our families, especially those of us who have family members in the military. Please keep them safe, and tonight, Father, please put your blessings on our Council clerk, Mary Beth, if she accepted another position, will be leaving us this Friday. Keep her safe, keep her under your care. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will move to number four on the agenda, reading of the Journal. Is there any, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, are there any minutes of the previous meeting, uh, minutes of the previous meeting transcribed, moving to the public viewing?
Yes.
Are there any additions or corrections to be made?
No, there are not.
If not, then the minutes, the approval is read. We'll go to number five, remarks of delegations and citizens to matters on the agenda. This is the opportunity for anybody here attending the meeting tonight that wishes to come to the microphone and comment on anything that is on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one, we will move on to number six on the agenda, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. Yes, Mr. Chauvin?
I'm assuming this is the right point in the meeting to do this, but I would like the council to reconsider, I'd move that we reconsider ordinance 84-2014 that we passed on July six, or on June 16.
Do we have a second for that motion? Second by Mrs. Cunningham-Hederly? Clerk, please take the roll call for reconsideration.
Chauvin?
Yes.
Cunningham-Hederly?
Yes.
Del Rio Keller?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Skazin?
No.
Stere?
Yes.
And Stinson?
No.
Seven yes to no to reconsider.
Okay, now we will reconsider that ordinance 84, that was to reconsider. Now, I believe it's just a simple priority now that it takes to, for action, whatever action, if it passes, or if it's not. Clerk, please take the roll.
Do you want me to read what it is?
Yes, please.
Ordinance number 84 would be section two, and it is an ordinance making certain appropriations from the inappropriate bounds for the parking enforcement fund for the year ending December 31, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
I ask that if you would please read the whole ordinance, we are reconsidering the whole ordinance. We're not reconsidering one part of this, we're reconsidering the whole ordinance, right, Mr. Chauvin, that's what you're...
That's correct, that's what Mr. Zedel must inform me, is the procedure, even though it's section two that we're questioning, we are actually going to vote whether we want to approve or disapprove the entire ordinance. If we vote no, and we're not approving it, at that point, the Finance Committee comes up with new ordinance that has sections one and section three, but does not have section two, and that would be done at the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Zedel, I see you back there shaking your head a little, or is there something you disagree with there, and should, or there's something we should clear up before we move any further?
Yeah, I was with you.
Why don't you come up to the microphone, please, something, right, if you're advised by the way?
As you know, I'm filling in rather last minute here.
Yes.
I have a whole, and cannot have a whole, or opportunity to review this. Also, not particularly familiar with the process of the procedure that we're doing right at this point, although I'm certain that we are ready to do that.
Yes, the rule is that after you've taken action on an ordinance, at the next meeting, regular meeting, that anybody that was on a prevailing side can move for reconsideration, and that's what we have just done here. I'll make it clear, that there were some people talking primarily about section two, but there are other parts of the ordinance, so it's a recommendation that we deal with the whole ordinance.
You may run into some problems if I talk to you just briefly, if the note section one isn't significant, among plenty, please inform me to throw us a letter of contact with that already, so I think you may be running into problems if we take that out.
Can we do what we, what was talked about there as far as taking section two of that ordinance? They can be separated when they're passed, could it be separated now, reconsideration, or could we, we voted to reconsider the whole ordinance when we separate that now, and pass sections one, three, four, and five?
I suppose it would help if we clarified just a little bit about what it is about the ordinance in general that people are seeking to resent, are the actions that you resent the entire thing, or just section two?
Mr. Chauvin?
Just only section two.
Section two.
I think, um, what is it? You didn't ask me that earlier, of course, plus, I thought, well, yeah, I mean, it looks like you had an ordinance number, so you had sections inside of it, I think if you take an action, assuming that this is going to go through, that section two is going to be essentially repealed, but if I reconsidered at this point, I can't say why not, I can't really point to anything that says yes, or anything that says no. I would, that's why it has to be, but we have to have a careful side of caution as far as, that's a $3 million, um, coverage there, because it has to be done, it's obvious, and that's why I asked him about it.
Yes, Mr. Lewis?
If it is the desire of council to move forward on this, I would think the most reasonable way to decide would be, would be to make a motion to divide the question, dividing out section two, and then allowing us to vote on sections one and three, and asking them to keep them intact, and then we can have a discussion on section two and continue, but that preserves the sections that we're not wanting to be addressed.
Okay, what do we have to do to back when we got the ordinance here? Or amend the motion, kind of the motion?
I don't think you have to, I think another motion being made by Mr. Chauvin, simply stating let's divide the question, and then we take, we're reconsidering, we're dividing, voting on the first section, first and third section, and then we can vote on the second section, however we decide.
I have a question, are we reconsidering the pay or the position?
We're reconsidering that part of the ordinance.
Which is the pay?
Pay and benefits.
So if you remove the pay and benefits, then there'll be no position?
Um, I would assume that I...
Should we move it, you're appropriating funds?
For position.
Well, for, for pay and position, was the position ever eliminated?
See, that's the question.
I believe it's always been, it's there now, despite the fact that no one's filling it, I believe if it was a resignation, oh, certainly not, I'm remembering, so if it was a resignation, the position remains there, unfilled, then that I can tell you.
It's Zedel. It's Zedel. Position is Zedel.
It's now filled, you're absolutely correct, it was divided, and this all is coming about because an appropriation was made for hire, and it's now for children for free.
Then we have to, have to read this and add it.
Correct. So, am I correct that by reconsidering section two, we're taking the pay and benefits away from this person that's in this position?
Right, that's what it says, yes.
So, we got somebody volunteering to do the parking?
No, she hasn't.
So then somebody needs to clear...
Okay, let's, you, you speak, Mr. Ranger.
They went from a part-time position, and then they added the working in the tax department to a full-time position with full benefits.
But section two only affects the parking part, correct?
Not, my understanding is working with the tax department.
That's what we have, that's what we have the ordinance tonight for, is for the tax department, right? I'm trying to figure out why, if we take away the benefits and the pay, will that, this still be a position?
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
My understanding on this issue is, regardless of your personal opinion of the hire that is made, all this reconsidering would do would be to defund the position, it would not eliminate the position, the person would not necessarily have to be removed from that position, they could remain in that position, but then, we would, they would get paid because we're obligated to pay them, because they're employed, so we find ourselves in quite the sticky, in my opinion, in quite the sticky situation of having a defunded position while we're still having employees, same thing we could do to any position within the city, simply take away the funding, doesn't eliminate that line. If the goal is to get rid of the position, then I would assume the appropriate route would be to go into the classification list and make an amendment to the classification list, remove the position altogether, then that position would not exist, and then that person did not fill that position, because the position is not there, because that's just my preliminary opinion on the subject.
Mr. Chauvin?
Thank you. The question that came up at our last committee meeting, if you remember, was, not that we don't want the parking enforcement position, but when this ordinance was put before us, the assumption was made, by me and maybe the rest of you that I've spoken to, that we were just doing, filling the position as it had been before, which was a part-time position, there was never mention of giving us a full-time position, giving somebody benefits, and splitting their time, 16 hours out of your work week from parking enforcement, and the rest from the income tax department, and paying part of the salary and benefits from the income tax department, that's, that's the issue right here, is we need, when we talked about this ordinance, this ordinance, the question was asked, and this, you know, is this a direct replacement for the person that we had before? Yes, you know, maybe we should have gone further and said, is this all this person's going to do, we didn't do that, so basically, we were not given the whole story when we voted on this, that's the reason that we voted to reconsider it, not that we won't come back in and still have this position sometime later, that's, I mean, that's not my intent, to do away with the position, Lord knows we need it downtown, but, but I have a real problem with the way it was put in and made a full-time position with, with benefits, you know, like, I don't even know the person that was in the income tax department that we lost, were they full-time or were they part-time? Do we know that? If they were part-time, though we never paid benefits before, now we're creating a position that is going to have benefits, and if they were full-time before with benefits in the income tax department, then what makes us think we can cover that position with half the person's time? So, so my, my whole thought was that this position was created to even create a job for somebody, give them full-time and give them benefits, and it was done that by taking two different positions and then creating one out of it, that's what I object to, and that's why I wanted to reconsider section two, so that we could clean this whole thing up.
Okay, Bob, with this word, we voted to reconsider ordinance 84, okay, passed to reconsider, okay, now, Mr. Chauvin, make a motion to separate the ordinance, make one part of this, sections one, three, four, and five, and the other part, section two, and we reconsider both parts and vote.
Last time it was, there was a 303 reading, there was a 303 again.
More reading was required.
Correct, in a special person.
Who would see a problem with doing that now?
Can we swing the administration out?
Sure.
Thank you.
Somebody from the administration, you may ask.
The mayor.
Good evening, Councilman, Mr. President, you know, Mr. Chauvin, we have given you all the information that you requested, and I'm offended, and I'm put out that you would not call my office and ask any question about this position, and we thought it was the right thing to do, we had someone that retired and resigned in that income tax department to put this together so that we have one person in there that can serve in the position for both jobs. Now, you didn't make a big deal when I hired Mr. Marcus, who's a male, white male, but you're going to make a big deal, because this is a black female.
You're out of order.
I'm not out of order.
Yes, you are.
It's a black female, that's your problem with this.
Of who?
Shame on you.
Shame on you.
This is a free world.
Are there any questions that you'd like to ask for the mayor? Let's keep it on track. Yes, Mr. Chauvin?
Was the income tax position a full-time or part-time position?
Part-time position, 16 hours, we said that last week when you asked the question.
It was previously, correct, I mean, the person that left was part-time.
The person that left before that was full-time with benefits. She was a girl.
Right, but then how, so, but do you understand my question, though, why, why if it was a full-time position before, why do we think we can cover it with a part-time position now?
It was a part-time position, the full-time position that left before that, we filled with a part-time person, that had, the full-time had benefits, we had enough money to cover that.
In the income tax.
Absolutely. We thought it was prudent on the administration's part.
My, my point being, though, if it was full-time before, somebody resigned, and you were filled it, or you filled it with a part-time person?
Correct.
Why, and, and the parking enforcement was a part-time thing before?
Correct.
Why do we want to create a full-time position with benefits if two part-time positions handled the job before?
Because there's a wall, that if you have over 30 hours, you must give benefits, you don't.
Well, where would they, where would 30 hours, I mean, the parking enforcement was 16 hours, so what do you go?
Parking enforcement is not 16 hours.
That's what we were told in the last meeting.
Income tax is 16, that's what you were told.
Well, how much?
24 to 30 hours is the part-time, is the part-time parking enforcement, that's what you were told.
How many, how many hours?
Once you hit 30 hours, you must give benefits.
So if somebody, so a parking enforcement officer plus, that's working in the income tax department also, what do you imagine their full hours to be?
Well, we're hoping to rotate them, so when we have the crowded in the downtown area, that they're going to be able to cover those problem times, which we have significant problem times at this time, because there are employees and business owners that park in front of their businesses all day long.
My original question for the mayor was, if this...
We want to keep the center control, already got our control points, so go right ahead.
My original question when you, when I brought you up was to ask you, if the income tax position was full-time, can it go back to being a full-time position?
Right now, Ken needs a 16-hour person.
That's all he needs?
Right now.
But originally, it was a full-time position?
The last lady, the first, the most recent lady that resigned was 16 hours, prior to that, it was a full-time position, and she left on medical.
And this is, but with this new income tax coming up, would it be, would it have a full-time person back in?
And they worked into a full-time again, but we didn't want to go right out, we're still in fiscal emergency, we're trying to watch our money, and we felt it was prudent to leave it at 16 hours. So if you had 16 for income tax and 16 for parking, just 16, you're still at 32, and so we need the parking more than 16 hours.
Mr. Lewis?
So, would it not be a cost-saving matter if we hire a part-time, 16-hour person in income tax, and then another part-time person in parking enforcement that works 20 to 29 hours a week, and then we do not pay either of them benefits, and we save money by not having to pay benefits at that point, and we both have part-time?
You're not getting great people, and the point was, if I go back into last week...
But both of the, both of those positions were already part-time, and we could probably fill them, but the problem, because plenty of people need jobs, and the city is trying to make cost-saving.
People need benefits, people need benefits, and I want to bring up the point, that the conversation last Monday was not about the part-time, the issue was that, because the police department, we did not offer that to the young girls in the police department, we did not do that, because they make much more than $11 an hour, this position is $11 an hour and $9 an hour, the ladies in the police department make about $18 or $19 an hour, that's why we did not offer it to you.
You did not answer my question, I was asking, is it going, would it be cost-saving to the city to not pay benefits to two separate part-time employees, that is the question?
This person can take on both jobs with a master's degree, and she's also going to be able to handle the clientele that get angry when they get a ticket, so she's educated, and she is the person that we chose for the position.
I'm not asking about the person.
I answered your question.
I was asking if it's a cost-saving.
I answered your question.
No, you didn't, thank you.
Mayor, I'm just curious, now, have these jobs ever been posted?
No, they're not posted.
So they're not offered to people that live in Massillon then?
You cannot discriminate, Mrs. Alter, you can't just hire people that live in Massillon.
So many people that live here that don't have jobs, or need jobs.
We have jobs all over our city, she uses hiring, fresh market side.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the city.
There are jobs in the city, by the city. Did you have someone in mind?
Okay, stop the arguing, please.
If you have someone in mind, then you should give me their name, I'm speaking, you're not going to...
You're out of line, you're out of line.
No, you're out of line, Mr. President, I'm tired of you interrupting me, I'm answering the question, you're out of line.
Zedel?
No, you're not, I'm answering the question, Mrs. Alter, if you have someone, you're broken, if you have someone in mind, please let me know.
I do not, I'm talking about citizens of Massillon, that's who I have in mind, thank you.
Well, you did have the first job for your son, oh, I don't want...
Let's stop the personal stuff, get back on the issue.
I'll be happy to entertain a included employee.
Mr. Chauvin?
Need to let me know, stay off.
Make your decision on what you want to do, Mary, finish.
Thank you, in light of Mr. Zedel's comments, then I propose to delay the question and reconsider section two separately from the rest of the ordinance.
And you would reconsider sections one, three, four, and five together?
Correct.
Because we already moved...
That is correct.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Mrs. Cunningham-Hederly, a second. We will vote on sections one, three, four, and five, question is, are we considering to pass or to turn them down?
Point of view, Mr. President, we have to vote on the motion to divide.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, roll call on a question of dividing, as I stated it.
Chauvin?
Yes.
Cunningham-Hederly?
Yes.
Del Rio Keller?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Skazin?
Yes.
Stere?
Yes.
And Stinson?
Yes.
Nine yes to divide the ordinance.
Okay, the first part we will consider, then, is section one, three, four, and five, we will, we will vote to reconsider those, roll call.
Chauvin?
No.
Wait a minute, you say we're voting essentially to re-pass?
We are voting to pass or turn down, yes, we have reconsidered already, so if you're voting, you want this part of the section to pass, it's yes, if you want it to go down, it would be no, correct?
One, three, four.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Cunningham-Hederly?
Yes.
Del Rio Keller?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Skazin?
Yes.
Stere?
Yes.
And Stinson?
Yes.
Nine yes on section one, three, four, and five.
We voted to pass, approve ordinance 84, sections one, three, four, and five, now we will vote on passage of the question that, ordinance 84, section two, yes, Mr. Lewis?
Should we confer with the law, the representatives from the law department, once capable of?
Sure. Come up, Mr. Zedel, please.
I guess my first question would be dividing... I guess my first question, we're dividing the question. We've already passed Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, and now we're to Section 2. Since we already voted to reconsider, and there seems to still be possibly some answers to questions out there, are we allowed, or able to allow that to go back to committee? Because we've already banked it, and essentially suspended it until the next meeting, giving us one committee meeting to get more information discussed. My concern is, especially with the elevated emotions of this evening, that we may make a decision without all the information that we need to make the proper decision. I want to make sure we handle this carefully.
Okay, I guess maybe what you're saying is that we would vote to table it for two weeks.
I guess. I want to make sure we can do that considering it is emotionally considered. Is where this all started.
I think we can, I think we can table it for two weeks.
It's been a difficult, you know, being called up to do this on the spur of the moment. It is. Right. Essentially, what you've done so far is decided that we're going to divide this into two sections. We vote to reconsider those sections and pass. So now we have an ordinance without a Section 2. It would seem... I mean, it is now reinforced, Section 2.
Correct. I believe you can take any action, right? Pass it, turn it down, or table it and reconsider it for two weeks.
Because I was thinking...
Reconsider it at the next meeting, which is tonight.
We've already drawn a reconsideration. Now we got to turn it over now.
Right.
Mr. Chauvin?
Yeah, I think the proper procedure here is we did bring it up for reconsideration, and the mayor is correct. According to the rule, you have to bring it up in the next meeting for reconsideration. So if we reconsider it and we vote it down, doesn't mean it can't come back again later as another, as another issue. But I mean, you can't, I don't think you can table it now. I mean, you have to reconsider within the next regularly scheduled meeting after the ordinance is passed, and that is tonight. The mayor is correct.
It would be inconsistent.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, that's the way we'll do it. We'll take Section 2 of ordinance 84 now, or it's, or we'll vote to pass. Any more questions before we go? Yes?
So if we vote to pass it tonight, or decline it tonight, does somebody have to motion to reconsider that next week? Or at the next official meeting?
Or really, even not?
I'm just asking, because that's what we're saying.
The motion, what, you would have any power next week that you have to have right now? You've got to figure out whether you're going to keep this or this statute or your law. That doesn't make sense. If you turn it down, you can re-propose the same thing next week or something different.
Hey, go ahead.
I heard the rules in front of me, and the rules state that no motion to reconsider shall be made more than once on any subject matter. So therefore, if we reconsider tonight, nobody can make a motion to reconsider at the next meeting. It would have to become a whole new ordinance if somebody wanted to bring it in front of us. You cannot continue to make motions.
Well, we could change.
So it won't be up for reconsideration? He thinks we have to operate on it, work on it tonight if we can to take, right? Right. That was his opinion, that we can't take. Any other conversation? Is it, could you, is there anything here that you want to add to this, or?
I'm just saying between us.
Andrew?
I just want to be clear, I guess, when the next vote is taken, what a yes vote is and what a no vote is.
Okay, a yes, yes to pass it, just like we did before.
And no would be turning it down. Okay, that's what, and I'm always...
Yes.
I have a question also.
Sure.
So are we turning down the position? Or we're just turning down paying benefit to this position?
Turning down, turning down the funding is the way I understand it.
So without funding, this position does not exist?
The position still exists as far as it is in our, you know, we do have a job classification. It still does exist.
Now, the fact that there's a person already hired in this position, and they've been working for several weeks now, will they lose their job after we vote tonight?
I can't answer that.
Can't anybody?
I don't see anybody. Can't?
Does anybody have an answer? Not a mayor.
If you don't have funding, Mr. Shadrick, there, you can't pay the person in the position. And she's already been here for two weeks, so I'm not sure what you're going to do to pay her.
Is there a legal ramifications for pulling this position from her?
It would be up to her.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chauvin?
Thank you. I would think since the person was hired both in the income tax department and parking enforcement is part of the responsibility, this does not affect at all their ability to work at the income tax department and get portion of pay that was coming from them. The question is, is whether, whether one person should be hired to do both of these jobs and give them benefits as Councilwoman Sterrett, or if we should have two separate part-time positions. And that is my question from day one.
So then we would keep this person in the income tax position?
That's not good.
We could, or we could keep them in this parking position and not the income tax position. Can you go either way? No, it's not a choice?
It's not our choice. Our choice is what to fund.
Where the fund is going.
Right. So if we don't fund parking enforcement now, the person could still stay on and be paid for and be working for the income tax department until we sort through all this.
And the income tax part is coming up tonight also. That's right. We've already approved that part, too?
No, that never came in front of us at all.
Okay, does anybody have anything new to add? Yes, Mr. Ross?
Just to further the labor point, according to the Roberts report, the effect of the adoption of this motion is to place before the assembly the original question in the exact position occupied before it was voted upon. I would interpret that to mean that if it was in the exact position, then it could, it was open to all motions and things that can be done to any other ordinance. Ask them. So if before it was passed, you were able to table it, then after you reconsider it, you should be able to table it. You just have to make the motion to reconsider at the next meeting, which we've done. That would be my interpretation.
I don't think that had any significance.
I'm just putting it in there.
Yeah. All right, is anybody else? Mr. Zedell, you want to comment anymore?
If I don't say something, a personal reaction would be, I could not, I don't have that worth of knowledge. Really don't. Normally, when somebody asks me for a legal opinion, I just go, I'll have to check on it.
Okay. We will now have a roll call on the second part of the ordinance, E4, Section 2, for passing, justice for passing, no as for...
Chauvin?
You know...
Cunningham, Heatherly?
No.
Del Rio Keller?
No.
Halter?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Manson?
No.
Skazin?
Yes.
Sterrett?
No.
And Stinson?
Yes.
Six no, three yes.
The Section 2 of the ordinance 84 is turned down. Okay. That's a pass. Ordinance 89, please read ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing a mayor of the city in Mason, Ohio, to advertise for and receive so bids and enter a contract upon a warrant approval of the board control with the lowest and best bidder for the pre-purchase of integrated fixed film activated sludge system equipment along with the pre-purchase of a vertical turbine, solid expanding pumps, motors, and associated valves at the wastewater treatment plant in the city of Mason, and decline an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is mainly just to put this out for bids. We'd like to get these bids in and get this process started. This would be for the construction of a salt storage structure that we talked about last year. I would like to bring this forward tonight so that we can get this process started. Are there any questions or concerns from anyone? Then I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and bring ordinance number 91, 2014, forward for vote.
Orderance 90 has passed. Ordinance 91.
An ordinance authorizing the director of public service and safety of the city of Mason, Ohio, to advertise for and receive so bids and enter a contract upon a warrant approval of the board control with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a salt storage structure to be located at the Department of Public Works on Waller Road South in the city of Mason, and decline an emergency.
Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is mainly just to put this out for bids. We'd like to get these bids in and get this process started. This would be for the construction of a salt storage structure that we talked about last year. I would like to bring this forward tonight so that we can get this process started. Are there any questions or concerns from anyone? Then I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and bring ordinance number 91, 2014, forward for vote.
Mr. Sterrett?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Second of the motion. Mr. Cunningham, second of the motion. Roll call, please.
Roll call for suspension. Cunningham, Heatherly?
Yes.
Del Rio Keller?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Skazin?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Stinson?
Yes.
And Chauvin?
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
For passage.
Cunningham, Heatherly?
Yes.
Del Rio Keller?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Skazin?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Stinson?
Yes.
And Chauvin?
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Ordinance 90 has passed. Ordinance 91.
An ordinance authorizing the director of public service and safety of the city of Mason, Ohio, to advertise for and receive so bids and enter a contract upon a warrant approval of the board control with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a salt storage structure to be located at the Department of Public Works on Waller Road South in the city of Mason, and decline an emergency.
Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is mainly just to put this out for bids. We'd like to get these bids in and get this process started. This would be for the construction of a salt storage structure that we talked about last year. I would like to bring this forward tonight so that we can get this process started. Are there any questions or concerns from anyone? Then I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and bring ordinance number 91, 2014, forward for vote.
Mr. Sterrett? Second.
Yes.
Second, like, Councilwoman Sterrett.
Okay. Roll call for suspension?
Yes.
Del Rio Keller?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Skazin?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Stinson?
Yes.
Chauvin?
Yes.
And Cunningham, Heatherly?
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
For passage.
Del Rio Keller?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Skazin?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Stinson?
Yes.
Chauvin?
Yes.
And Cunningham, Heatherly?
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.